Moving on to the next speaker, please. CJ Hawking, followed by Speaker 42, Mariana Chavez, then Speaker 43, Marilyn Delatorre, Speaker 45, Ebony Carr, Speaker 46, Josh Radinsky, and then 49, Corinne Beverly Bass.
Good afternoon. I am Reverend CJ Hawking. I'm a United Methodist pastor and the executive director of Arise Chicago. I thank you for this moment to come before you today. I want us to have clarity as to what this moment really is about. And that is that you are not bound to any decision. You are free to respond, and I see the looks on your faces as parents come before you and tell their stories. You are free to vote against the closing of these schools. You have a moment here. Now, the owner of the Montgomery Bus Company had a moment where he could have chosen where Rosa Parks and other citizens were going to sit, but he did not take that moment. The captain of the Ohio National Guard had a moment to reconsider issuing the "shoot to kill" order at Kent State, but he did not take that moment. The law enforcement officials in the South had a moment to reconsider the use of fire hoses and attack dogs, but they did not take it. But you today now have a moment to reconsider. We ask you to not put yourselves in the legacy of the company of Bull Connor and the Ohio National Guard. We ask you instead to live up to the greatness that this city is. We are proud Chicagoans-
Ms. Hawking, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
...who love our city, and we invite you to take this moment. Take a step back, show you care, show us your leadership and humanity, and please know our prayers are with you. Thank you.
My name is Mariana Chavez. I'm a proud parent and I would like to share my article that appeared on the Chicago Sun-Times this Saturday. Many of you have seen the TV news footage of 7,000 Chicago public school parents and supporters who marched down May 8th. But I want to make sure you also know why so many parents took the time off work to send a message to CPS. The rally was organized by Charter Parents United to ask the CPS protect our school choice and provide our children with the same level of funding they provide to students in traditional public schools. I joined other parents to create CPU because our voice has been missing from the recent debate about public schools. We are tired of charter schools being attacked when they are some of the best choices available for our own children. I live in Brighton Park in the southwest side with my husband and our six children. Our older children went to neighborhood schools where a shooting would occur and we would not know if they were safe. I was told that my child was failing a class, but they could not tell me why or how to help my child. Around the time my youngest daughter was going to kindergarten, I learned about charter schools. I found a spot for her in a charter school, but it was 85 blocks away. At that point, I decided I would rather travel two hours each day than send her to a neighborhood school. Like any parent, I wanted her to have the best chance to learn, go to college, and get a good job, and the sacrifice has been worth it. My daughter is finally getting the education she deserves, but she's not getting the same level of funding from CPS as other kids in other public schools. As I was filing my taxes this year, it reminded me that my family and others who choose public charter schools pay the same taxes as everyone else. But our 53,000 students are not getting their fair share of CPS funding.
Ms. Chavez, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
I am not a politician or an expert in education policy. I am just trying to do right by my child. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker 45, Ebony Carr.
Good afternoon, President, Board members, CEO. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak this afternoon. My name is Ebony Edwards Carr, and I live in Bronsville, and I am a proud Charter Parent United supporter. Both of my children attend CICS Bucktown, which is a Chicago Public Charter School, which services children that are low-income as well as 98 percent minority. This school, which offers a high-quality differentiated education to my children, one of which is special needs. I am willing to drive upwards of three hours every day to get them to and from school. For my son, who is on the autistic spectrum, there couldn't be a better, more positive environment that meets his needs. For my daughter, who is precocious and advanced for her grade, she is also challenged in a way that encourages her to thrive and to be prepared for success in high school and college. I stand with Charter Parents United because, for my family, the charter public school that we have chosen has answered our prayers. Dr. Barbara Bird Bennett, we so look forward to meeting with you in a public forum to ensure your support for equitable funding for charter public schools that our children deserve. I hope you will be inspired by meeting families like mine who are grateful for the choice of a high-quality charter public school. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 46, Josh Radinsky, followed by Speaker 49, Corinne Beverly Bass, followed by 51, Anthony Williams, 53, Gloria Moon, 56, Michael Colwell, 59, Daniel Horton, and the last speaker, Speaker 60, Beverly Catherine.
Good afternoon. My name is Josh Radinsky. Excuse me. I'm a parent representative on the Citywide Local School Council Advisory Board. We are the only representative body under state law that is in a position to advise you, the board, on policies affecting our children. We, the LSCAB, voted unanimously last month to advise a one-year hiatus on any of the proposed school actions because the plans for these massive actions do not appear to be ready for implementation. This was after we had multiple meetings with Barbara Bird Bennett, Tom Tyrell, Marke Winston, Alicia Winkler, Jadeen Chow, other members of the Cabinet. Please listen to the voices of the CPS parents and community members that you serve. The proposed actions constitute the single most significant policy decision that this board will make for Chicago's African-American community. Eighty-eight percent of the kids on the closing schools are black, more than twice the district's percentage. On the other hand, fewer than 1 percent of those kids are white, less than 1/10 of the district's percentage. More than a quarter of all African-American children living in Chicago between the ages of five and 14 will be directly affected. In other words, this is primarily a policy for Black Chicago, specifically in West Side and South Side neighborhoods. Is it the right policy for African-American children? Taking away neighborhood schools? Crowding displaced students into similarly performing schools that are further from home? Is this the legacy that you, as a board, want to have in Black Chicago? Rather than, for example, transitioning students in an orderly fashion into higher-performing schools in their area? Or using available building space to move wraparound services directly into the schools? Either of those would be a bold move that you could take, and it would be supported by the evidence base of 10 years of research on school improvement.
Mr. Radinsky, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Dr. Benin, when I got my PhD from Northwestern University, I was taught the importance of warranted argumentation from a strong evidentiary base, of valid and relevant data, of ensuring that the integrity of the evidence should weigh more than arguments based solely on authority or power. Chicago is counting on the six of you to do what's right for the children of Chicago. Please vote, all six of you, against this hasty and destructive plan.
Thank you, Mr. Radinsky. Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 49, Corinne Beverly Bass. Last call. Moving on to Speaker 51, Anthony Williams, please.
Dear City of Chicago, Board members, CT reps, teachers, students, family, and friends. My name is Anthony Williams, a proud parent of the community, and I am here to ask and beg that you reconsider the closing of our public schools. You are breaking a bond with teachers and students and sending hundreds of teachers into unemployment and thousands of kids into areas unknown. Our children send out a cry asking parents and teachers every day, "Will we have to relocate? Why is our school closing? What did we do wrong?" And I say to them every day, "Absolutely nothing." You say there is no funding in the budget to hire more teachers and afford better computers and new books. However, I find that our rank in the City of Chicago, we have funding to rebuild the Red Line and make landscaping improvements of $115 million to attract the tourists to Navy Pier. Let's not forget the proposal for a new casino to be built in the Chicago area, but millions of dollars for these developments, but none for our schools. Now you say that certain schools are performing better than others, and where the underutilized schools will be handed over to the selective enrollment schools. These are the same schools that reject students and IEP kids all the time. But based on your views and records, this is just fine. Mail School and 50 other schools that have reached out to kids and never closed their doors will be closing, based on your vote. Yes, we are disgusted with the crime and the dropout rate, but what do you really think will happen if you close these schools? Forcing our kids to walk into these areas, unknown. Is it fair to the children? No. As parents and citizens of the inner-city community, we look forward to graduations, proms, transitions to college, and even careers for our children. Now with just one vote, we will have to worry about the paths they take, the streets they cross, and more violence.
Mr. Williams, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
You have a chance to stop this. You have final voice. My ears are open. Are yours open? Do you hear what I hear? You can help our children by keeping the schools open and ask the mayor and governor to invest in the children and not in these projects. And just don't forget that at the independent hearing committee, one of your committee members said, "Rethink on Mail School." Thank you, and vote well.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please, is Speaker number 53, Gloria Moon, please. Last call. Moving on to Speaker 56, Michael Colwell, please.
My name is Michael Colwell. I'm a 7th and 8th grade math teacher at Leaf Erickson Academy. For months since this process began, we've had parents, staff, and students digging deep into the data to prove that Leaf Erickson doesn't belong on this closing list, that we're a solid CPS school, we're not underperforming or underutilized. Fortunately, it appears that in the midnight hour, we've been given a reprieve from this irreversible decision. We thank you for that. We'll prove that you made the right decision. However, as we dug into that data, we discovered that this process has a fatally flawed foundation. That's the performance level rankings. As we analyzed the performance levels, we discovered schools like ourself, Level III schools, that outperformed Level II schools on ISAT tests in 2012. We found some schools like Erickson, a Level III school that outperformed Level II schools in 2011, 2010. In fact, we found some that outperformed Level II schools for almost a decade. The process is fatally flawed. We do appreciate you taking a second look at Erickson, especially you, Ms. Bird Bennett. We also brought some more data to prove that you made the right decision and strengthen our case. But we also urge you to take a second look at these other schools.
Mr. Colwell, excuse me. Can you please conclude?
Sure.
Thank you.
We urge you to take a look at these other schools before you bestow this irreversible decision, this educational death penalty. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please. Speaker number 59, Daniel Horton, followed by the last speaker, Speaker 60, Beverly Catherine.
Good afternoon. Thanks for supporting me. Okay. Good afternoon. I wanted to say hello to everybody. I only got two minutes, so let me get to the point. First of all, I'm in a group called West Side Against All School Closing, so I'm here to say that I don't want no school to close. Second of all, I want to say that I'm the LST president of Marconi Community Academy. Marconi test scores, ISEP test scores, were 63.5 percent. Tilton test score was 98 percent, but that's a receiving school. Marconi students' reading, they receive a reading, Marconi had a 59.9, Tilton had a 50.8 percent. Then you go to the math. Marconi had 62.2. I forgot. You all have a handout. 62.0 percent. Tilton, they beat us in this. They had a 67. I'm not going to lie, I'm telling the facts. Then in science, we was a 66. They was a 59. Student in another composite ISEP, we had a 7 percent. Tilton had a 7.7 percent. What I want to say to you all today, that we are a Level Three, but our test scores is higher than Tilton. I don't understand how are they are the receiving school. In reading impact, we had a 0.9. They had a 0.8. Then when you go to the report card, Marconi student growth is far above. Tilton student growth is above, not far above, but above. Both schools' student performance was below average. I say to you today, before you make a decision of closing Marconi, how come we wasn't the receiving school instead of going to Tilton? This needs to be investigated. The data is wrong. Our school has continued to-
Ms. Horton.
I know. What I want to say to you all today, all schools do not need to be closed. And we not under your lab, but you all are penalizing us for the science labs and all those different computer labs and all this. I have tried to talk to you, Ms. Bennett. I called two weeks ago, and your secretary never got back to me. And you all want us to-
Ms. Horton.
Yes?
Thank you.
Well, please read my papers. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker and final speaker, Mr. President, is Speaker number 60, Beverly Catherine.
I'm Beverly Catherine, and this is my sister, Evelyn Morales, and we're representing Morgan Elementary School, the school that was named after the man that invented the stoplight, the black man that invented the stoplight. We all, what we're saying is, we're asking you all to reconsider and to take Garrett Morgan off the list. And what we're going to do, my sister and I, we're going to end this with a prayer.
I'd like to thank everybody who's here. It is only because the one who is in higher authority is with us here today that we're all here as brothers and sisters. I'd like to take a minute to pray for all of us, if you would allow that. I'd like everybody to close their eyes and bow their heads. First of all, I thank my God that He got me up today. Thank you, Lord, because every part of my body hurts. I was diagnosed with 10 different things in my body after my brother was murdered 15 years ago. In his honor, God allowed the school to be named after him, our Morales Academy. The school was in danger, and it is no longer in danger. But I'm standing here before you, not because of my brother, not because of my son at the school, who's a top student, and not because of me. This is more than what we're talking about. There is a right and there is a wrong. There is a just and there is an unjust. There is a heaven and there is a hell. And God, thank you, Lord, for allowing us this opportunity to be here today, because this is a day where history will be made. Thank you for allowing those in leadership to have their position, Lord. I ask that you continue to grant them wisdom. Convict their hearts, oh Lord, if that's what's needed, and give them, Lord, give them the answers that they're looking for. I know, I know that I know that I know, that they are, there are many who are guardians here, who are parents, who are brothers and sisters, who have children in CPS, who are responsible to make the major decisions today, oh Lord. I pray that you grant them the wisdom and the answers that are necessary to do the right thing, to do the just thing, oh Lord, because whatever decision is made today will affect not just us and our generation, and not just our children, but future generations, oh Lord. I pray that you continue to guide us all and grant us the wisdom necessary. We honor you, we love you, and we thank you for this day. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
Mr. President, that concludes the public participation portion.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now proceed with the business portion of the meeting. Barbara.
Good morning, President Vitale, and members of the Board of Education. Today, each board member is faced with a difficult decision. I recognize that the choices are not easy, but I also recognize and know that we must do what is right for children. Since October of last year, I've had many conversations with each of you about the challenges our district faces and the tough choices that must be made in order to provide the platform for every child to succeed. We can no longer embrace status quo because the status quo is simply not working for all of Chicago's children. I know that change, I know that change is not easy to embrace, but I do not believe that we can deviate from what is right. We cannot maintain a system that cannot be sustained and one which does not benefit children. Chicago does have 145,000 fewer school-aged children than it did in 2000, and while we have classroom space for 511,000 students, only slightly more than 400,000 students are currently enrolled in our schools. For the over 400,000 students currently enrolled in the Chicago public schools and for the future generations of children who will learn and grow in Chicago's classrooms and in neighborhoods, it is imperative that you take the difficult decision, but the essential steps necessary to address those challenges. The greatest challenge facing our school system right now is that tens of thousands of children every year are trapped in underutilized schools and under-resourced schools. As we meet today, nearly 50 percent of our schools are underutilized and nearly 140 are more than half-empty. These schools are mostly located in the south and west side of Chicago, and as a result, principals in those schools are forced to make difficult decisions and trade-offs every day. Because they have limited resources, these principals must often negatively, unconsciously but negatively, impact the quality of edstruction for our children. Our children in the underutilized schools are more likely to be in split-grade classrooms. They are more likely to have less access to critical resources and supports and enrichments. They're trapped in schools where teachers do not have the 21st century tools they need to guarantee each child, to guarantee that each child has a high-quality, powerful, meaningful learning experience. Quality instruction is a fundamental right and entitlement for every child. It is not a perk. There's no blame for principals here, and there's no blame for our classroom teachers, and certainly there's no blame for parents and children. The blame rests here with a system that has failed to address the fundamental questions and has failed to make tough decisions. Many people have been passionate about this issue, and some of the members of our community have provided recommendations, alternatives, and suggestions, and solutions, and we have listened. There are also people who have advocated for keeping things the way they are, and for me, that's not a recommendation I can bring to this board. The decisions you're about to make matter very much. As a teacher, a principal, an administrator, and yes, as a grandmother, I know that resources matter. Our children do matter, and it matters that the status quo is not acceptable for our children. It matters that we must ensure Chicago is a system that's truly equitable and that we're no longer a tale of two cities. Like it or not, the system does have to change. By addressing our school utilization crisis, we have an opportunity to redirect limited resources, to make investments in what matters, programs that support our children and their families while providing children the opportunity they need to compete and succeed in the classroom and in their future and in their future lives. The problems our district face are not our children's fault, far from it, but it will be our fault, our collective fault, our collective responsibility if we fail to address the challenges by doing what is easy instead of what is right. I recognize that Chicago public schools cannot do this work alone. For our children to succeed and thrive, they need the support of an engaged and empowered community. The community feedback has driven every step in this process that has led to the recommendations, and they will continue to do so in the development of our draft transition plans. From the beginning of the process, I recognize that there was a lack of trust, confidence, transparency, and I also understand that it takes time to build trust, transparency, and respect. I insisted that there be authentic community dialogue and engagement at the front end of the process, which the law did not allow for initially. Once we received an extension from Springfield, we did convene an independent commission on school utilization, and a comprehensive coordinated engagement process was initiated. The process included more than 225 meetings throughout the neighborhoods, and more than 34,000 members of the Chicago community participated. I've read more than 2,003 pages of testimony, and over the past six months, I've had more than 103 meetings that have included students, parents, teachers, principals, the faith-based and civic leaders, LSC members, the LSC Advisory Board, as well as elected officials. I've engaged community members in every neighborhood in our school district, and I've met in schools, churches, community centers, in Springfield, and at my office. Our meetings have been respectful, meaningful, and productive. The unprecedented level of community engagement, community feedback, and recommendations of the Commission on School Utilization guided a process that removed 277 underutilized schools from consideration, and the process took those 277 schools off the consolidation list. Yes, we have listened, and we've responded, and we've considered the thoughtful input of community. For those schools that will consolidate, we will ensure that every student attends a performing school that has the resources that it needs, and that every welcoming school will have the things that parents, teachers, communities, and members have said that they need. There will be air conditioning in the classrooms, a library in every school, a safe passage to provide safe routes for students on their way to and from school. There will be security upgrades, cameras and entry screening equipment at every school, academically iPads for students in grades 3 through 8, enhanced technology for many schools, including computer labs, engineering, media, and science labs. We're adding science, technology, engineering, and math STEM programs. We're adding new interbaccalaurate programs and a fine arts program in the welcoming schools to ensure that our students in those neighborhoods have high-quality programs. We're putting into place robust social, emotional supports, and cultural integration, those programs that parents, students, and staff can use to build positive communities at those schools. Schools are convening working groups as we speak to share best practices so that the new school community can encompass the success of both schools. The safety and security level of every child is among the top priorities in this process, which is why my team has been working and continues to work with the Chicago Police Department to continue planning for safety and security and the supports needed in our communities. This partnership builds on the work we currently do each day at 40 schools. Our Safe Passage Partnership with the Chicago Police has kept our children safe in the perimeter and in our schools. Deputy Chief Steve Georges of the Chicago Police Department is here. His leadership is driving the coordination of the Safe Passage Program, and Deputy Chief Georges has spent many years in the force and led the city's safety planning efforts around NATO in Chicago in 2012. I'd like to take this opportunity to ask Steve to talk with you about how CPD, CPS, and the other sister agencies and departments are working together to keep our children safe. Deputy Chief Georges? Deputy Chief Georges?
Mr. Chairman, board members, thank you very much. My name is Deputy Chief Steve Georges of the Chicago Police Department, here representing Superintendent McCarthy this afternoon. The department's mission in this process is to ensure that all students in the city of Chicago are safe and secure while going to and from school during the 2013-2014 school year, as in every year. This includes working with the CPS and all of our city partner agencies to ensure that there's a cross-agency coordination to develop a plan for the safety of these students affected by the CPS transition. The safety of our children has always been and will continue to always be our top priority at the department. It is a priority last year, it's a priority this year, and it will be a priority next year. In 1999, after the Columbine tragedy, the Chicago Police Department was one of the first departments in the country to start working with schools to create individual safe security plans. This continues today for every single school inside the city of Chicago, not just Chicago public schools. The department is using the NATO planning model to work on the transition. The model will use over twenty-five members of the superintendent's senior command staff to ensure that we are doing everything we can to address safety concerns. The police department has five main objectives. The first was to review the provided information on individual school safety plans, safe passage routes, the security plans for the safe passage routes, and provide our recommendations and feedback to CPS. This initial review of the safe passage routes has been completed. We accomplished this by looking at crime, current and historical conflicts, current intelligence, conditions, sex offenders, investigative alerts, warrants, just to name a few things. During the process, we received feedback from our district commanders, our area deputy chiefs, our gang enforcement divisions, and our deployment operations center. We looked at these routes that the children will be traveling. We looked at everything from lighting to the state of buildings to transportation options that may be a possibility. We have also tasked all of our city partners to do the same for their areas of responsibility. We can assure you that this is and will remain a thorough process. Secondly, we have to ensure the continuation of the sharing of information when warranted surrounding the transition schools, to ensure that the most current intelligence is analyzed and made available for use. Third, we will work with all city agencies as needed to ensure the action items are identified and completed along these designated safe passage routes. Some of these agencies are the Department of Buildings, Business and Consumer Affairs, Fire Department, Streets and Sanitation, CDOT, Family and Support Services, to name a few. Fourth, we will develop a comprehensive incident action plan for the department for the start of the school year that will utilize all department resources that are needed and will cover all schools, public and private, in the city of Chicago. Lastly, we will assist in the development of a citywide incident action plan, which delineates the roles and responsibilities of all city agencies next year at the start of the year. In conclusion, this is not a new process for us. We are simply taking existing programs that work between CPD and CPS and expanding them. We work very closely with CPS every single day to ensure the safety of our children. Some of these strategies include a trained intervention team that helps identify and deescalate situations, both in the schools before they get to the neighborhoods and in the neighborhoods before they get to the schools. We conduct a daily conference call to discuss the previous twenty-four-hour periods so we can strategically deploy assets and resources as needed for the next school day, and we're a direct communication line between the schools and the individual districts. This is important to us not only because of our role, but personally. We walk these streets in these communities, we live in these streets in these communities, these are all of our children, and our children are our most precious asset. While some see challenges, we may see the opportunities, opportunities to take children and families that may have a history of not getting along and afford them the opportunity to sit next to each other in a classroom, to learn together, to play together, and to see that they are not different, they have the same likes, they have the same interests. Imagine the opportunities this could create, breaking down barriers that could have a dynamic impact in increasing safety in all of our communities for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. If I might just, Barbara, let me thank you, Deputy Chief Georges, for coming here today and speaking to us, but more importantly, to thank Superintendent McCarthy and you and the entire department for working so cooperatively with CPS over the last few months to give us at the board level the assurance of the safety of our kids as we undertake this challenge. It's really been terrific and remarkable, and I do appreciate it, and I'm glad you mentioned the fact that the other agencies are also working here. You know, we have met, Mayor Manuel has requested all the agencies to support this effort in a fulsome way, and I've had a chance to meet with those agencies, and I must say, I really am thankful for the responsiveness of the entire city and its agencies to the work that we're undertaking. So, thank you very much, and thanks Superintendent McCarthy as well.
Thank you.